All right, I'd like to call and order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel and litigation issues under Maryland Local Government Article, Section nine dash five twelve A, one and two, and administrative function items under Maryland General Provisions Article, Section three dash one oh four.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bye. How are you this meeting? Wonderful. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Pi Day, for all you math people out there, three point one four. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda with the addition of a work session to follow, to immediately follow this meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Quarter point. You're up. So this weekend, I attended a concert by the Chamber Orchestra of Southern Maryland Concerts. So it was orchestra comprised of like band and strings, and then adults and students. And actually, this year was pretty interesting because they held a young artist music competition for, you know, schools in our area, but also schools in like the Charles County area. And then they how, they, you know, four musicians won, two violinists, and then two pianists. And they played fabulously. I don't know, most of them were, one of them was an eighth grader, and most of them were ninth and tenth graders. And actually, one of the artists was Caitlin Eng, and she was, she's part of our Slack committee. So it was very nice to see her there. And then also, I attended one of the Rising Freshman Orientation Nights at Great Mills High School, because we have a little bit of favorites in there. And we, I particularly talked about the SEMI Academy, but it was very interesting because throughout the whole night, I mean, Rising Freshmen for different schools came in, but they had different, I guess, sessions where they talked not just about, you know, one particular academy that the school sponsors, but all of the academies, and also just very, the various clubs that we have. So we talked about ROTC there, and then just about the general coursework that is expected. And I think it was very helpful, because I remember as a Rising Freshman, you have a lot of anxiety coming in, and just seeing kids, a lot of kids were facilitating, like high school kids. So seeing kids who survived high school is definitely an added bonus.
I went to Park Hall Elementary Schools. They had a physical education show, and boy, it was fun. Some of the kids had the opportunity to stay after school and practice for this. They had done this over several weeks, and they had a routine, so everything was done to music. And I guess it was probably about, I would say probably like a half an hour show. Ms. Washington and I both attended to, attended that. But the kids were really enthusiastic doing, you know, doing their physical education to music. And, and one of the things that they did do was climb the rope, which I just thought that was fascinating, because I never would have been able to do that one, but the kids were able to climb this rope and get up there. And it was presented by Ms. Wood and Mr. Malone, who are the PE teachers there. And, you know, and they also spent their time after school working with the students to do these routines and everything. And then, at the very end, after everything was done, the school, along with Ms. Wood and Mr. Malone, along with Mr. Zerbiak, were presented an award from the state for the PE demonstration, a PE demonstration school. So they've received it over the last several years. But it was a lot of fun, and thank you for both of those PE teachers for their hard work. And like I said, stay in after school and work with the students.
I attended a job fair that was held at the Forest Center last week. It was very interesting. I interviewed, or I talked to several of the candidates that were being interviewed for jobs. It was interesting. I talked to one lady that was from Pennsylvania, and she had gone to school in St. Mary's County school system, went away to college, and decided to come back to teach. She really showed an enthusiasm. I hope that we were able, we will be able to hire her. Also, I met a number of schoolteachers, administrators. I asked them about their needs for, you know, getting new teachers. It's kind of a challenge, as everybody knows. You can probably get more money as a college graduate, working at a bank or something else, but most of the candidates that I talked to showed a real interesting interest and calling for teaching, and I think we had a very successful job fair.
Let's see. I have attended the last two county commissioner budget work sessions, which are just fascinating. We'll hear more about that later. Let's see, the community evening event on school safety last week, very well done by Dr. Smith and Tim Cameron, and Mike Wyatt, and Ed Clark. So there were a lot of good questions afterward by a lot of the parents that were in attendance, and I think it was well received. And that, that whole meeting, once again, was the result of a question that came out of a forum that we had on gangs a few weeks before. So I think the response time was, was phenomenal, that we were able, or not we, that Dr. Smith and his staff were able to pull that together so quickly after that request was made. And then last night, I attended the Chopticon Rising Freshman Night with my daughter. So, a lot of people, a very good shout out to Ms. Bachner. I greatly appreciate the fact that she told every parent to hand their red sheets to their student and let them take responsibility for their classes. And I think that was a good message. I still saw some parents that actually did not give their sheets to their students after they repeatedly asked for them, but the student then did eventually prevail. So it was, it was very well structured. It was a little warm, very, very warm in, at Chopticon last night, but there were a lot of people there. So thank you to everyone that put that on and that stayed after, you know, your typical workday in order to pull that off for those students. So, that's all I have.
Good morning. I will highlight one of the events that I attended with Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Weaver, Mrs. Bailey. We attended the Head Start Health and Wellness Fair held at the Forest Center. It was a magnificent event, and we had a huge turnout of parents with their pre-K students and, you know, and Head Start students. I want to thank Dr. Kelly Hall and the Head Start Program, and our community sponsors and volunteers. Prizes were donated by local vendors, and there were many prizes, including bicycles were given away, about eight to ten bicycles. The Sheriff's Department donated bicycle helmets. The Hollywood Volunteer Fire Department donated books on fire safety and fire helmets, and Sparky was also present. Free meals were provided for the participants. They had their choices of meals for what they would like to eat. And our Food Services Department gave a presentation on healthy food choices, and they had games about food. The University of Maryland Extension Services were there. The Lions Club gave free vision screening. The St. Mary's Health Department had a table set up talking about healthy choices, and they had free pill boxes that you could take away, and they talked about pill safety. The Maryland Coalition for Family, for Children, Mental Health, and other mental health agencies, and family counseling agencies were present. They talked about they operate on a free or sliding scale basis for families who need counseling, who can't afford it. The Pastorial Counseling Center was there. The College of Southern Maryland talked to parents who may not have their GED, and talked to them about how they could get that as well. Our St. Mary's County Department of Transportation was also present, talking about bus safety and the routes that the bus would take. And MetStar St. Mary's Hospital was there as well. And I want to give a thanks to Dr. Brewster from the St. Mary's County Health Department, who did a very good presentation on the opioid addiction crisis and the things you need to look out for. So kudos for the school system for preparing our parents and Head Start students for a positive experience in school. Thank you.
Recently, Comptroller Peter Francio came to the county to visit Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. He's a member of the Board of Public Works in addition to being the comptroller, and the Board of Public Works is responsible for funding the state portion of our school construction projects. Mr. Davis, Mrs. Weaver, Mrs. Washington, and I all toured Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School along with him. We talked about the fact that the school's been open a couple of years, and yet, because we build our schools with an eye toward great sustainability, that not only does the school have many green features, but also the fact that we, we care for those schools very well. We maintain them, and so our schools last for fifty years or longer. There's a great conversation going on at the state level where some members of the Board of Public Works believe that we should be building schools faster and cheaper, but the challenge with that becomes the ability to maintain them for the length of time. It costs a great deal more. So you either pay on the front end, or you pay on the back end. He was very impressed by the school and, and by the tour, and so we were pleased he was able to join us, and we were able to show him what we feel a model school looks like. And he was impressed by the fact that, also by the fact that we have reused that design on a different site, so that we're not going in for new architectural costs when we construct another school. That was it. Dr. Smith, Smith was with us there as well.
Yeah, so the great part of my job is I got to attend all of these things with, with all of you, and they were, they were really great. I would like to, as Roma started with the Rising Freshman Orientation Night, I'd like to kind of, on the other side of that, we've been doing that for almost ten years now. It is really a great opportunity to talk to our eighth graders about high school level expectations, and we talk to them about the importance of their voice and advocating for themselves, and that the world becomes full of a lot of choices, and you have to be well informed. And so attendance at all three of the schools was excellent. Lisa Bachner gave her presentation, even with a technical glitch, she gracefully carried on and went through very well, to all of the teachers and all of the, the staff that came out and supported, the central office staff, for all of the students, because what we've done in each one of those breakout sessions is we've realized that, that adults talking to kids aren't as compelling and engaging as the students in the programs talking to the kids. So all of the students in the particular pathways, they, they come out and they become really the spokespeople for those pathways. And so for all of you who over the last three, those three nights over the last two weeks came out and did that, that's fantastic. The Community Safety Information Night that was held at Leonardtown High School started at seven after the Head Start Community Health and Wellness. So we talked about how we, how we get the very best start for our littlest learners, and how we support not only the children, but their families as they come into the public school. And then to be talking later on about how we keep kids safe in school, it was a really, it was a really effective conversation. There's going to be a follow-on state-level meeting coordinated by Ed Clark before we go to spring break, talking about the entire state of Maryland and initiatives, and Governor Hogan's support for and funding for some of the infrastructure things that might be done at our schools. More to come on that. As we get information, we will share it. The video that we shared at the very beginning of the presentation so caught Mr. Clark's attention that he asked to have it sent to them so that they could share it across the state. I also had the P'Zam, the superintendent's meeting on last Friday, where Dr. Salmon recognized St. Mary's County for some of the things that have happened in the way we've worked together through some of the more, through, through issues. And she also praised us for that work. We have shared our see something, say something, and then specific tips for children as they, as they get their social media, and then report it, don't repeat it. So there's a very good chance that you might be hearing that echoed across the state of Maryland, because a good message is a good message. What else did we do? We had some great festivals. We had the All County Elementary Honor String Festival and Band. That was absolutely lovely. It was great seeing all of our kids come together. We invest in the arts in St. Mary's County, and we have incredible artists who just come back and give us all of that wonderful, wonderful experience. And the, the last, I will say this about the Job Fair. The Job Fair was well-attended. We had well over a hundred people coming down and expressing interest in St. Mary's County. And the reason why people want to come to St. Mary's County, why educators want to come to St. Mary's County, is because this is a fabulous place to work. And the reason this is a fabulous place to work is because we have a great relationship with our Sheriff's Department, with our community partners, with our health and wellness, and with our associations who represent all of our employees, over two thousand employees, and because we have a negotiated four-year contract that says that come July one, they'll get a step increase, and they'll be provided for throughout the four years. And that's why people come out, and that's why people who are interested in joining St. Mary's County. We'll have a little more conversation, obviously, about money later on. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure, nothing else.
Nothing else for now, thank you. But it has, it really has been great. It's been, it, come, come into our schools, visit our schools, see the wonderful things that our students are doing and our adults are doing, and that's, I think it'll, I think it'll dispel a lot of the anxiety people feel if they actually go into school. So if you hear somebody who's critical or worried about, tell them, ask them the question, when was the last time you were in a, in a school, an elementary school, middle school, high school? And if they can't tell you that it's been within the last year or so, tell them, really encourage them to do that, to get into schools, to actually see what kids are doing, because our kids are amazing. And a shout out, I believe, to Colin Foster, who had a really great conversation today on the T-Bone and Heather Show. He really, he's also on our Slack. He's an exceptionally well-informed young man, and I think he handled himself really well on the radio. Thanks.
Did you want to mention April second?
No.
Okay.
Fine. We had a win day. We had a win day. It was, it was a state emergency. All of the school systems closed. Some people believe if it's a state emergency, the day is excused. It is not. We have asked the state, would they consider allowing us to have that be excused? And they said, no. You have a schedule where you've identified three, three inclement weather days and two alternates. Now, we did get past President's Day, so President's Day, we had it off, but the Monday, the April second, that day, we identified as a makeup day, and so the state says we are going to be attending that day. So you do have off the entire week before. So it's not as though you don't have a spring break. You have, you have five days before off, and actually with the weekends, that's nine days off. So please, I look forward to seeing all of you, teachers, principals, support staff, and students on that, on that day. Now that is a two, that, we're replacing a two-hour early release day, and we're going to come before the board in April to talk about taking that two-hour early release day and putting that someplace. My recommendation is going to be before the board that we take a, we make a two-hour early release day right before the Memorial Day weekend in, that Friday in May. We think that'll be popular and an appropriate place for us to say, let's have a two-hour early dismissal. So I'm sorry we had a win day. We were so close.
But if you're interested, there is a bill moving through the legislature
Yes.
to amend the school calendar executive order to go back to what it originally stated, which was that we would close no later than the third Friday in June. If we had that for this year, that would alleviate the need to go to school on Easter Monday. So just saying, if you're interested, I can give you the bill numbers.
So state of emergency equals automatic forgiveness, urban legend.
No, no, that's not, that's not. And so for all those on, so for all you parents on Facebook.
Urban legend, people.
And we really did. Dr. Barr actually asked, and we were, and we were told politely, no. But we did, we did, we did indeed, we did indeed ask. So, yes, that's April, all right, yes, I did, you're right.
Really, really finish now.
I really finished now. We have, we have wonderful things to be presented, so.
Okay, any public comment?
Yes, we have, Esmic President Jill Morris.
Jill, you read my statement? Just make your way up there. You've heard it before. All right, we welcome public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take time to listen and consider, but not comment. Please do not make negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent, and we will also not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students that is outside of the scope of public comment. Please don't talk about any student or employee appeals, since we are the appellate body. Very prayer phrasing here, forgive me. You signed in at the beginning of the meeting. Your public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you have a written statement, please provide it to Kathy, and she will distribute it to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bailey. Good morning. I am Jill Morris. Many of you know me. I am the newly-elected president of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. Today's going to be a hard day for me to speak. Yesterday, at the budget session, my heart broke. Esmic has worked so hard to partner with the Board of Ed and the President, and the Superintendent. I just promoted you as Superintendent and his cabinet. To build bridges, to be positive, to invest. Yesterday, there was a lot of negativity expressed about our association and our contract and promises that were made. I want us to find a way forward. I know the Superintendent and the Board of Ed wants that. What was so heartbreaking yesterday is that our Superintendent went back repeatedly to the budget sessions and pared down his budget. Started at eight million, came yesterday with one point five. Could make it work, could make it work for the steps. We can't make all the positions work. We need all of these things desperately. Educators are people in this community who invest and who support and who vote. So I come today to just say that it was very discouraging yesterday. I implore the commissioners to try and find a way forward where everybody, not just educators, but the Sheriff's Department, the county employees, everybody gets what they deserve, because it's very difficult to make your way forward as an individual in this community, and we are a rich community, we are a rich community, if we don't get an increase in our pay and our insurance premiums go up. So there, there's a lot at stake. We have a public hearing, April seventeenth, with the county commissioners, and right now, put it on your calendar. I'd like to begin to invite people to come to that in a way they never have before, and to show the commissioners that educators are invested and have been invested in this community. So I, I just, I just want to say thank you for listening to my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We have no action items for this board meeting, so our, we have two information items, the first of which is the presentation on the Academy of Finance, which is housed at Chopticon High School. So we have Denise Mandis and Ms. Cynthia Baden.
Good morning, Board of Education.
Good morning.
My name is Denise Mandis. I've been before you many times, and I supervise the Academy of Finance for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I'm joined today by Ms. Cindy Baden, the department chairperson for the academy, Mr. Perner, the assistant principal at Chopticon High School, who is the school-based administrator that supports the academy, and four of the academy's finest students, Arianna Chase, Jada Curtis, Ayesha Rennie, and Justin TD. We would like to expand for a few minutes and highlight the program, the opportunities it provides for our students, and the excellence that they present. Ms. Baden?
Thank you so much for having us today. I know we haven't been here for a few years, but I think it's time that we get the students back out, telling you everything that they do. I've been working with the Academy of Finance since two thousand and seven. I've seen a lot of growth. It's very exciting to watch the students who have graduated, they are coming back. I have heard another one last night, I found out, is now working on the base, so it's coming full circle, and that's what we want. The program started with just seventeen students, and we did start at Chopticon High School, and we still are very focused on business at Chopticon. We're very lucky with what we have, the students, the advisory board, the teachers. We provide so many experiences for the students, so they can develop professionally. When they leave Chopticon High School, they are ready for the business world, they're ready for college, technical school, wherever they're going, they're ready. We do everything we can. We've heard from several graduates over the past few years, and what's nice is they all tell us the same thing, that what they learned in college is, or what they learned in high school has helped them in college and helped them with interviews, and that's what we want. They're going to go out in the real world. We want them to be able to pay bills, we want them to be able to budget, and we want them to stay out of debt. Our advisory board, we have right now fifteen professional business leaders, organization leaders, that come with, meet with us every quarter. They provide us with classroom speakers, they give us lots of updated issues, things that have happened right here in the business today. They'll bring it to my classroom and tell me I can incorporate it into the curriculum. It helps us stay up to date. It does help us to keep the students where they need to be, so when they graduate again, they're ready. They provide one-on-one interview skills. The students acquire so much through all this networking, and we all know that's big networking. And as the students go through, I do encourage them, I want them to be in a more rigorous program, I want them to take the advanced placement courses. When they go to school, they move on to college or technical school, it's going to be harder. And if they take the advanced placement courses now, they are well-prepared. They have more time in class now than when they go to college, and it's only a semester. And the best part of all of this, with the pushing these courses, and I know the students get tired of hearing me say it, last year we had a student graduate, went to University of Tampa, she started as a sophomore. And that's thanks to advanced placement and the dual enrollment opportunities.
There are many unique experiences and intern, internship opportunities that Ms. Baden has mentioned. They're clearly key aspects of the academy. Additionally, with Board of Education approval, the Academy of Finance has recently adopted a new scope and sequence. It's designed to continue with the tradition of rigor and relevance as students prepare for college and career. We're excited to begin this newly-designed Academy of Finance coursework in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, with an academy-specific pre-AP English course. Further coursework continues to expose students to the demands of college-level research and synthesis, and we're particularly excited about the adoption of the AP Capstone Program within the Academy of Finance. So we're looking forward to really amazing things to come. I'd like to turn it over now to Ms. Arianna Chase, who is a senior within the Academy of Finance, and I'd like to give her a moment to speak about some of her opportunities and that is working.
Good morning. One thing I would like to talk about is the Budget Challenge, which is a simulation that allows students to experience real-world financial situations, and it's online, and I participated in it at the beginning of this year. And it prepares us for real life, because there are bills such as credit card bills, car loans, car insurance, and also and also it throws in adversities like getting robbed and getting in car accidents and penalties for not paying your bills to show that life is not only easy. And it's also a real-world ready score to show basically how ready you are for the financial world. Last summer, I also did an internship for the Board of Education Division of Supporting Services. And I did filing, copying, I did the spreadsheets and requisitions, and I got to work in each and every department in the Division of Supporting Services. And that gave me the opportunity to work in different environments and not just in the same place. So I was able to learn more than I could have in just one of the departments. And I realized that the Board of Education has a huge role also in the summertime. For example, the food services, there's a lunch program that they have at certain schools that I got to go and, and look at with a coworker. And I went to Carver, Lexington Park Elementary School, and other schools to see how it worked. And also overall, I felt very welcomed and everyone was nice and willing to help. Now, here's my classmate, Jada Curtis.
Hello, my name's Jada Curtis, I'm also a senior in the Academy of Finance and I'd like to talk about the field experiences I've had within the academy. So, with these field experiences slash field trips, I feel like they've truly cemented what I want to become in the future. I wanna be a corporate lawyer. And one of my most memorable field trips is in tenth grade going to New York City. And we toured the financial district, we went to many museums, we learned lots about the stock market, stuff like that. And I feel like that and seeing the inner workings of business and seeing it on a larger scale has truly opened my scope of view to what I can do. Because I felt first limited, but the academy has opened that up to me. And I also had an internship, it was actually here, I was in the purchasing department. And I've learned that the purchasing department is a real integral part to the Board of Education.
Oh, yes, it is.
Yes, it is. I've went through the whole process of requesting quotes, making requisitions. I went through all of that and I bought many things for different schools for the Board of Education itself. And I've learned a lot about it. And it was a great experience for me because I learned that I don't only wanna do finance, but I want to incorporate law into finance. And I'm also in the Future Business Leaders of America, I'm the president of that. And my classmates as well, they are also in it. We've competed regional level and state level. And it's been a great experience with networking because I've learned so much to further my, further what I've done. And I couldn't imagine myself talking now in front of you people. But being in the Academy of Finance and FBLA, I've gained that confidence to, to do that. And it's become, become way easier. And the Academy Finance has truly helped me and I love all that I've done with it. And I'd like to give the microphone to my peer, Ayesha Rennie.
Hi, my name is Ayesha Rennie and I'm taking a rigorous course of study, which includes my academic courses, um, AP Physics, Calc AB, and Language and Composition. Um, my coursework has taught me how to manage my time efficiently and how to really like prioritize things in my life, like with sports and classes and after-school activities. For accounting, we use a program called Sendage. And Sendage is online and it also is partnered with a book that we use in accounting and we use it for everything. And while there have been some nuances, it also teaches you how to adapt to new programs as you move through it, which is like applicable to like the real world when you have a job and they have a new software that you need to use. Um, and our end-of-the-year project in accounting is we're playing Monopoly and we're tracking all the transa, transactions that we make throughout the game. And we finished the playing part and we've tracked everything in our general ledgers, general journals. And now we're putting everything in our general ledgers online, like we would do in the real accounting process. And we have to make sure that everything is accurate and accounted for, like you when you actually do accounting. And now.
I'm Justin TD, I'm currently a sophomore in the academy. The academy gives us chances to meet with and interact with business leaders in the community. We recently attended a field trip to Cedar Point Federal Credit Union, where we met with the CEO, the head of security and social media director. One of the activities we did and that you can see in the picture on the screen is we had to ba, balance the, um, the ledger. And we had to make sure that what we added up matched the balance on the paper and make sure that there were no discrepancies. We also met with the social media director, who showed us a heat chart of their website homepage. And a heat chart, if you don't know, is basically a chart that tracks where the most clicks are and shows you that in a color-coordinated, uh, document. And from that, last year I took a course, Foundations of Computer Science, where we got, learned an introduction to coding through CSS and HTML. And one of our assignments was we had to code a homepage about an important event we had in our lives. And this relates because now we have the knowledge to code a webpage, but also know how to make it look visually appealing and interactive with the people using the webpage. Currently in my finance class, we play a game called the Stock Market Game, which is an online game where you get about one hundred thousand dollars and you can buy and sell stocks with the goal to make the most amount of money. And this is interesting because we don't only play with our classmates, but we play with kids all over Maryland. And currently, me and my partner are in third place. And last time when we played it, we finished in third place as well. So it's, you learn a lot from it. We learned that not only can you make a lot of money, but you can lose a lot of money. And you don't wanna put anything in that you can't afford to lose because it's very possible. And overall, it's just a very good program that it pushes you out of your comfort zone and makes you realize your capabilities. And anyone that, give it back to Ms. Mandis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning, as we recognize the hard work and efforts of primarily our students, um, also our staff of Chopticon's Academy of Finance. I think through their poise and their presence, um, it's certainly, um, without mention that they're an amazing group of kids. Um, and they are open to any questions or comments at this time.
I just, I have one overall comment. Um, I came out of Fortune five hundred companies and I worked for a big six accounting firm, when it was big six. Um, and for, to have a program like this in a more rural area where we do not have a wide range of Fortune five hundred companies or presence besides, you know, Deloitte and Touche and, um, you know, which is primarily consulting down here, um, you know, not public accounting, um, I think is very commendable. So I think, I think the field trips that you take and I think the, um, you know, those experiences go a long way because it is difficult to get a good view of what true corporate finance is like down here 'cause we just don't have those companies that are, that are, that are in our area. So hats off to you for doing that, so. And I do have one question, if I can continue on. Um, business ethics, right? Um, what type of classes and what are you teaching in the line of business ethics? 'Cause going back to my days, keep in mind that there was one whistleblower that brought down a company and an accounting firm. So I'm interested to know what we are teaching our students in that area.
The senior year, the course is actually divided, we covered the whole year, so we cover both, but it's business and the global economy and business ethics. But ethics are covered every year.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It just depends on what we're talking about, ethics are constantly thrown in.
Okay. Even within our ninth grade course this year, we piloted the differentiated curriculum. Um, and through one of the texts, I know the ninth grade English teacher was even delving into ethics through the lens of The Secret Life of Bees and having them come up with a local product and examine some of the local implications if they were to market, um, said product in this area. So I think it's even, we're, we've made a lot of headway in that and we're really starting to expose students to that concept. Um, especially now that social media and things are so prevalent, um, there's, it's, there's a whole new kind of, um, aspect to it that maybe wasn't there before, so.
And I will say, our guest speakers, many of them touch on ethics as well.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Well, my main question was how, especially for, uh, you two seniors, but I know one of you touched on this, but how you think the academy has steered you, um, in, I know you still have time to decide what you're going to be doing, but steered you in the direction of your career and pathway?
My father owns his own business, so I knew I always wanted to be in business. But being in the Academy of Finance, I saw a different side of business, like not being only an entrepreneur, but doing a service in business, like I said, corporate account, corporate law. So I'd work with businesses as well as in finance. So that's what's really helped me and served me in that direction.
Um, I knew I probably would try to get a job on base because my mom always tells me what types of things she does because she works on base. And she said that I could probably become a business financial manager, which is a BFM. And so the Academy of Finance has taught me what really has, goes on in businesses, 'cause I never really understood that until I got into those classes that the Academy of Finance provides for us.
And, um, I guess for the younger, younger I say this, but like for two years, but, um, are you guys able to learn, um, from your, from the seniors who are graduating, but also I guess the ones who have completed internships, things like that?
Um, yeah, like, we learned a lot about like networking and how, what career options we have. Like we've done, had guest speakers where they talk about careers in accounting or like in finance departments, like financial planning and consulting. So that's like really helped a lot of what I wanna do, so like now I wanna know, I at least want a minor in business or accounting.
Yeah, speaking with all of the guest speakers, it shows you what is out there and what you can do. And it really makes me more interested in doing a career in business and makes, and that's what I would like to do.
And I'll elaborate on that for just a second. When I came in the other day to initially meet with the four of them and we started to talk about this presentation, they were all four collaborating on their upcoming FBLA competition. And it, so it was very much grades nine through twelve and they were in there, in the trenches, planning, arguing a little bit maybe, but planning and, and working together to create that presentation. So I think there is definitely the opportunity for them to dialogue with one another as well.
Um, the internships. Now, do you decide what type of internship you want and go out there and seek that type of internship? Or are the internships presented to you and those are your choices?
It's either or, I could not find a law internship in this area. So I had, I know I wanna be in finance, so I came here at the purchasing department. And working here, there's also law going on, so I'd work with affidavits with, uh, Vicky, I forgot her last name.
Ma'am.
Yes. I'd worked doing filing affidavits and getting the signatures and doing stuff like that. So I have done what I'd wanted while also being, what, used what I was presented.
Sure.
Um, we have the opportunity to present certain jobs that we may wanna do to Ms. Baden to see if it would be acceptable for the internship or if you already have a job that you already do to see, maybe if there's something you could do financial at that job to where you wouldn't have to go somewhere else and quit your job maybe or take a break from your job. Or if you can't find an internship that you wanna do, she will try to find one for you and present that to you and fix you up with an internship, with an interview and help you.
And I will say, it is very nice, um, a new chamber president has been in my classroom already. Met him, he has opened up opportunities. I've already received calls from three different businesses now, I got another one this morning, wanting to meet with me, interested in internships.
Oh, that's fantastic, great.
It is, it's wonderful. And the nice thing is, they're willing to come to the school, many of them, and do the interviews at the school.
Okay, great.
Uh, I just wanna applaud, uh, your program. You know, I'd, I'd never saw anything like this when I was, when I was in school. Uh, I grew up inside the Beltway and I was business challenged. My father worked for the Bureau of Standards and I thought everything was created by the government. Uh, and I found out after I got into business school, uh, that, that, and I don't mean this to be pejorative, but, uh, government consumes wealth and business creates wealth. I mean, it's a very simple statement. So your interns and your students here are doing a wonderful job in being able to understand the fundamentals of how the economy works, uh, how we create wealth and the risk that you take, uh, that you mentioned, the risk for the sake of profit. That's a definition that I learned years ago of the definition of capitalism. It's, it's taking a risk for the sake of profit. And if you, your students, when you learn this early on, uh, I think it helps you quite a bit, so.
Ms. Washington?
Okay. I wanna thank you, um, Ms. Baden, for spearheading the program. I remember when it started, you've done a wonderful job. I have attended the program and I've been a guest speaker there. And my topic was on first impressions make lasting impressions. So thank you for that opportunity. I also wanna thank your advisory board for all that they do for the students for being advisement to you and scholarship offerings that are made as well. I wanna thank the students for their excellent presentation. You did a brilliant job explaining the program, what you learned from the program and, and what you seek to do in the future, what, what you learned in the program. I would encourage you and future students to seek the dual enrollment so that they will have a head start when they get, get to college. Also, the mentorship program is excellent, uh, for the students to get an opportunity to get real-life experiences and to work in various department at one particular company. Also, um, I, you had mock interviews as well. I participated in that and the students interviewed very well. You know, somebody had said to me, you need to teach the students how to interview, and we do. And the students did a brilliant job, they were very professional. Also, you have presented their projects that I've also seen and they were very good. Uh, topics such as how to finance for college, um, how to purchase a car, a home, just a variety of topics, and I found it also very interesting. So thank you, students, and I encourage you to encourage other students to join the program so that we can keep the program going and thriving. And thank you for all you've done. And the FBA is a really good piece to me of the Academy of Finance 'cause it works hand in hand with using the skills that you learn and be able to showcase what you learned around the region, the state of Maryland and, um, the country, what you've learned. So thank you for what you're doing, thank you for sticking with the program, Ms. Baden. You've done a wonderful job and I know the program will continue to thrive. Thank you. I commend you for being such articulate students and for your poise and grace as you have presented to us today. I'm pleased that the program has grown over the years and that we are increasing the rigor. Um, for Ms. Baden, I know you said that we started with seventeen students. Um, how many students do we have in the program at this time?
Hundred and thirty-seven.
So clearly, it is a program that is drawing students. And, um, I know that by your examples, you're encouraging others to participate in the program as well. So, um, best of luck to all of you in your future endeavors. And I look forward to, um, seeing how you move along and I hope you will, as others have done, come back and let us know how you're doing, where you're doing it. And, um, I love the idea always of, um, someone gave you a hand up, um, to get to where you are. I, I encourage you to do the same for others because sometimes it just takes someone to express that faith and to, um, show someone, uh, how to take that next step that will open, um, the world for them. So congratulations to all of you and good luck.
So the, so the, it's existed for a decade, starting with seventeen, well over a hundred now. A decade from now, as you are all through college and out, earning and earning well, and earning well. Um, fortune favors the prepared mind. You are, you are making an investment right now of your time and of your effort and of your intellect to make sure that you are ready when you hit the next phase of your life. And, um, you know, to Ms. Baden, um, you know, it is, it's, it's fantastic, it's fantastic to s, to see these kids. I'll tell you right now, come back and see me, um, you know, we'll be looking for somebody, for legal representation, for somebody to help us with supporting services and, and management, for somebody to work through all of the complexities of purchasing and regulation and procurement because it becomes more complicated every single year. And ultimately, if you gravitate towards social media and coding and messaging and how we get a message out and how we make it resonate with the community so that they will take their risk and they will invest with us, um, that's a really great thing. Uh, we, you know, I, I just, I, I thank you for coming out today. You. You, four, well, five, six, you, you have made, you have made my day. As Ms. Morris states, and emotional at the very beginning, there are so many things that we can dwell on that are, that are negative in, in the world. We need to focus on the incredible things that our young people are doing. Don't take it lightly, you are absolutely the future, and you're all, so are any of you eighteen yet? Fantastic. Will any of you be eighteen by November? Great.
Register to vote.
Register to vote, become involved. You need to help leaders make good decisions, and you are definitely prepared to be able to do exactly that. So just, thank you very much for your presentation today. You guys are great.
And we'd like to invite everyone, um, just to, if you're interested in learning more about the academy or seeing more of the amazing work of our students, um, we will have a Financial Literacy Night at Chopticon High School on April twenty-fifth, as well as their, um, Academy of Finance Completion Ceremony in late May. And so those will both be on the Academy of Finance calendars for your viewing, and we'd love to see you there.
On the board's calendar as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you wanna stick around, we're gonna have our, our.
Our finance report.
We're gonna have our finance report. You don't need, you don't need to, I, you have things to do. But that's, uh, that's the conclusion of our meeting.
And then a work session talking about the.
And then a work session talking about budget and finance, and how we make our money work to what we need it to do.
We're not.
How we make our money work, do what we need it to do.
We know the law.
This won't take long, if you stick around, we'll take pictures afterwards. Okay, great, we'll do that. So she's pulling up this, every single month, the school system presents to the public exactly where we are with our financial position for our expenses and our revenues, and then also has a public accounting of all of our transfers within county, within categories. So that the public can know exactly how their dollars are being spent in real time. That's how a transparent organization goes about its business. So with that.
So how appropriate for me to be following the Finance Academy's presentation.
Someday, you could be an assistant support center on finance.
If you, any of you are interested in pursuing a CPA license, you have the opportunity to take ethics classes every two years. It's required for the CPA to maintain that. Um, I encourage you to consider that, by the way, and then come back and have a conversation with us about future employment. So the revenue, uh, report is before you, of the adopted budget is two hundred and fifteen million dollars. Year-to-date revenues have been received of one hundred and fifty-three point six million dollars, representing seventy-one point two-five percent of our budget. Um, currently, we've received seventy-six percent of the county revenues. All revenues are on target. On the expenditures side, I'd like to point out one area, um, and that is special education. Um, we're at ninety-four point six-nine percent of our budget. However, as you recall from our prior conversations, we don't have as many out-of-county placements, non-public tran- transfers this year. So we're looking at eighty-three point eight-one percent of our budget. This will have a trickle effect into next year's budget for forecasting purposes because it decreases our revenues next fiscal year. Bottom line, our encumbrances outstanding currently is at eighty-four point eight million dollars. Total year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures at two hundred and two million dollars, and the available balance is thirteen point one million dollars, representing ninety-three point nine-two percent of our budget. Are there any questions?
I forwarded her questions that you had read.
Right, so I just wanted to kinda go over that with, uh, you know, I guess the public. Um, there were some questions on transfers that I had and, uh, sent them in, and, uh, Dr. Smith and, uh, Ms. Bailey forwarded them to you. So, and I did receive a very timely answer, in fact, it was that afternoon. So it was, uh, questions on transferring, uh, uh, from, uh, it's, it's all within the same category. So it was on two-nine was the question, um, to cover, uh, reallocated salary savings and contracted service savings to cover administrative salary variances and annual lead payout. So I did receive an answer on that. Um, and then, um, and a lot of it was due per CUMAR regulations. Uh, the other question was on two-fifteen, um, let me see, it was, uh, it wasn't the frozen supervisor, it was the, uh, for the, it was the.
The abacus and the grant.
Yes. And so I received answers on those, uh, preparation for new ag- grant application was one of the, the answers, 'cause I, I didn't understand why the money was being used in that way, and they were preparing that person for taking over, and, um, oh, and about the, and the, the playground, that, that some of the, uh, money had to be transferred over to, um, uh, the playground equipment to make sure that it's upkept and for safety reasons. So, and thank you for getting back, I mean, you got back very quickly, within like an hour or two, back to me on those questions, so.
Anyone have anything else? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any more board member time? No, okay, all right, chill, I gotta do some things here, all right. So the next board meeting is April eleventh at nine AM, and we will adjourn this meeting, and we'll take a ten-minute break to talk to the AOF students, and then we'll come back for our work session.